There's. Thank you. The Thurston County Planning Commission is a resident advisory committee to the Board of County Commissioners on land use planning matters such as comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance amendments. Planning Commission actions are in the form of recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners who are the final decision makers. All Planning Commission meetings are open to the public. Community members are welcome to observe all Planning Commission briefings and work sessions. And public comment is welcome during the public comment section of each meeting during any and during any scheduled public hearings. All right, my name is Derek Day. I reside in District One. And we will go ahead and continue our introductions here in the boardroom and then go to our commissioners on the. Line. Starting with Commissioner Casino.
I'm Eric Casino. I live in the Lacey UGA and I serve in the at-large position under Commissioner Grant.
I'm Daniel Bumbarger. I live and serve for District One.
Joel Hanson, serving District Three.
Scott Nelson, District Four.
Barry Halverson, District Two.
Kevin Pestinger, District Five.
All right, and then on the phone, we'll start with Commissioner Kaiser and then go to Commissioner Fishburne.
Sandy Kaiser. I live and serve in District Three.
Bill Fishburne. I live and serve in District Four.
I got a quick question. Can you guys hear us very well tonight?
Yeah, we I can hear you great. It's unusually clear, actually.
I just wanted to check because they said that they fixed it.
I think they did. I think they did, Barry. It sounds really good.
I'm sorry.
It sounds good. Commissioner Kaiser sounds like she's got an echo to me, but you guys also fine.
I'm gonna stall for a second because Commissioner Bartlett, I think is making his way. Intrepid biker in the freezing pool.
That's.
Give him a popcorn.
I'm sure you don't want popcorn.
To get him a hot toddy. Also wearing shorts.
Wow.
We were just doing introductions, so you can go ahead and hop in, hop in line and introduce yourself.
I am Helen. I use he/him pronouns. I represent District Five. Still, just checking. I am have a casual relationship with time.
All right, with that, we'll move on to approving our meeting minutes. I don't have an official copy, but.
I would like to move to approve the meeting minutes and accept the audio as the official meeting record.
Scott is correct. We're out of our agenda order. So first, we have our agenda here tonight. And I would entertain a motion to approve our agenda.
So moved.
Second. All right, all in favor or any discussion? All right, all in favor? Aye. Aye?
Aye.
Right, that motion passes. Okay, now, back to where we were. Our meeting minutes for December eighteenth.
I would like to move to approve the meeting minutes and accept the audio as the official meeting record.
Seconded.
All right, it's moved and seconded. Any discussion on the meeting minutes? All right. All in favor of approving our December eighteenth meeting minutes and accepting the audio as the official meeting record? Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Stay out of town.
Okay. That motion passes. All right, moving on in our agenda, we're moving to public communications and we have one person signed up. One, Ms. Betsy Norton. Oh, we moved.
I can get it. That's okay. I can go wherever, whatever everything's working. Whatever your.
Move the microphone aside.
Room for your interpretive dance.
That's okay. I'm I'm really fine. Thank you. I just wanted to say something about you guys are talking about BNIOS and you're gonna be talking about the something about VIS. So I just wanted to make a couple of comments. When I looked at the staff summary, I saw a couple of things missing that I sort of recall being there. Concerns about drinking water, vulnerability, partly coming from the hydrology report and I have a copy here of that. And concerns also about whether the Grand Mountain wastewater treatment plant is sufficiently large and sufficiently capable of handling more intense development. So when you're gonna add all these people and increase capacity, I think it's important to remember that there's no city there to provide this infrastructure. So the county has to do these capital improvement projects and all that stuff. Make sure you have parks and libraries and wastewater, drinking water and everything is 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 properly protected. And the other thing is there are a lot of wetlands in there and there are a whole lot of species in there. So every time you pave those over and the arterial, the AC arterial commercial zone allows eighty-five percent impervious pavement. So just think about that. Think about stormwater runoff and stuff like that. So thank you very much. And I just I actually printed out hard copies. And. I'll share that. There you go. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much, Betsy. All right, do we have anybody online who would like to provide public comment? Go ahead and raise your hand if you'd like to, and we can promote you to a panelist. Anybody online? Going once, going twice. All right. Thank you very much. That concludes our public communications and moves us on to new business. And we have elections up now for new business. We have two officer positions. We have a chair position and a vice chair position. I thought it might be, I don't know if it's too soon to talk about this. Also, I wonder if it's worth adding to the list of our elections. I know we had talked about a representative from the Planning Commission on the Water Resources Board. And that might be worth a discussion, maybe just throw it on the slate while we're there.
I mean, we're still recruiting for that. We've been trying to support the board's office and doing a broader recruitment than is traditionally done. We don't have a firm date on when the first meeting of that would be, but there's definitely space for a planning commissioner.
Who's heading that up?
I'm the staff lead for it currently.
I think the priority topics the first year will be related to the Shoreline Master Program and and then we'll expand from there.
Is there a hydrologist on there?
There's no one that's been appointed yet. We are, that's one of the focal areas that we're hoping to recruit for. It's folks who are shoreline landowners or have a business affected by the Shoreline Master Program, but also people with a background in in water resource issues. We'd love a hydrogeologist along. Good knowing me.
Go ahead, Commissioner Pestinger.
I would just say for Commissioner Bartlett and Kaiser and Fishburne's benefit that we had a brief discussion right before the meeting started with others about people wanting to run or not run for certain offices. And in the past, we had a whole committee and they did a process of talking to people and seeing if people were interested. So I don't think any of the commissioners here in this room, other than Commissioner Bartlett, who just joined us, have any interest in changing anything from our current structure. But if Commissioner Bartlett or Kaiser or Fishburne have any interest, you know, if you want to share that, then we can figure out how we can have a proper process for it all.
What is our current process?
To ask for nominees, then accept them, then vote on them.
Just here.
Yeah.
Okay.
We can be as fancy or not as we want. Starting, that's basically.
Yeah, just make a motion to nominate Derek Day as the chair and Joel as the vice chair for twenty twenty-five.
I'd second that. All right.
I was hoping to at least let them have a chance to say something first, but okay. Sure.
We also saw some, we, it's not recorded in the record, but there was some relatively vigorous head shaking. So.
Oh, yes or no? They don't.
May the record reflect that.
May the record reflect vigorous no nod.
I am happy to take the fact that we are doing it now as the example of how we do it.
There's a grand poobah position. I would be open to that.
We could probably create that office. We could motion to form a committee to develop a position description for a grand poobah.
It might be just an honorary position, but you know, the title's great.
We'll take that up. I think next time we look at our bylaws.
I think we gotta get some free hats.
All right, we have a motion on the floor, moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Not so much discussion, but as a matter of process, you have to ask for nominees three times.
Okay, do we have any more nominees? How about now? Okay, I think that's three times. Does the poobah also, are they in charge of parliamentary procedure as well?
Yep.
Okay.
Full parliamentarian.
All right, I'm on board. All right. A motion is moved, seconded, asked three times and on the floor. So I would take a vote and let's go ahead and call the roll.
For each position.
Oh.
It can be done as a slate, as a slate. It can also be done individually.
Okay.
So. Say that.
But just to clarify, this is a slate that we're voting on. All right.
Commissioner Bumbarger.
Aye.
Commissioner Halverson.
Aye.
Commissioner Casino.
Aye.
Commissioner Hanson.
Aye.
Commissioner Kaiser.
Aye.
Commissioner Nelson.
Aye.
Commissioner Fishburne.
Aye.
Commissioner Pestinger.
Enthusiastically. Aye.
Commissioner Bartlett.
Aye.
Commissioner Day.
Aye. All right, we have elected our officers for the next season. Go ahead.
I'll just make a quick statement for the record that I don't think we should encourage that we think we would have the same exact positions every year for twenty straight years when TRPC transportation falls aboard. That we should be open to new chair and vice chair every term, but just so happens you folks have done a great job and are willing to continue serving.
Thank you. Much appreciated. All right. Water Resources Board. So is there a plan to have, is, would that be, planning commissioners would apply to that board? Or is there a plan to have like an ex officio seat for that commission?
I think it would be more ex officio.
Would be more ex officio, just to clarify. So, okay. So we don't have a process for that. That's a new thing, new position.
And it could be rotating. It could be one.
Yeah.
It's really, you know, how do you want to engage with the Wonder News Advisory Board? It's also something we could revisit once it's up and running and we have a firmer agenda.
Just some points of clarification, since it hasn't been stood up yet and you're still getting applicants for that position. What is the the meeting schedule like for that?
It's gonna be every other month.
Every other month? Do we know what week of the month yet?
I think we're trying to just use the same calendar that SWAB was using, which I believe is the third Tuesday of every other month, starting in January.
Thursday, because it overlaps with Ag Advisory Committee. I used to have to do three back-to-back meetings on Thursday nights.
That's a Tuesday.
Yeah, I think it's Thursday.
Oh, okay.
I can look it up.
We'll look it up.
I'm sure.
Whatever SWAB was, that's what we're planning to do, I think.
Okay. I never trust my recollection. I just do what the calendar says. All right, I don't know if we have to take any action tonight. I just wanted to raise it as something that we might put on the agenda for ourselves to talk about again. If we want to maybe figure out if we want any process around that or if folks might want to self-nominate if people are interested in the water resources.
Like cross that bridge only come to it.
Okay. Is that a pun?
Well, I'm definitely. I mean, I don't think we have to do any work on it, but it's not in our rules and procedures. It's not an elected officer position. I think we could all decide amongst ourselves, do we want this to be something that we all vote on? And that's self-nominated, we all vote on, or we want some to chair just to point to somebody. But either one will probably, according to our rules and procedures, fine. I don't have a preference.
We could theoretically send a request to the VOCC saying, we think this is a good idea and we'd like you to make it official. Right?
We could just, we could put it in our.
Add it to our rules and procedures, maybe when it becomes a reality.
Yeah, we could even add it as an officer position if we wanted to.
Maybe.
So.
You may not want to do that. That might create an officer role, or you then have to have meetings with all three of you to do things.
Okay.
Well, it'd be an ex officio role anyway, as I understand it.
Yeah. For that board.
Right, that's what I'm talking about. So it would basically just be attend the meetings, provide advisor assistance from the Planning Commission to that particular board. And they don't have any, any requirement to take any advice or assistance if they don't want it, but and then report back to the Planning Commission on any actions the Water Resource Board takes. That's as an ex officio role, that would be what I would assume would happen.
Yeah, and then informing the policy or the discussions.
Right.
That happen here.
Commissioner, Mr. Here, am I hearing correctly, you say that if we made an official officer position on the Planning Commission, that it would require all three of those officers be present to take action? No, it couldn't just mean that if you, rather than you two just being able to confer and decide on things and the chair. I mean, the chair would still have the authority to set an agenda and things like that call for meeting. But if you want to do any other business, you might have created just like a group that all three of you have to be present in order to work on things. Not as part of this, but if you do anything, it's a leadership role.
Yeah. We want to avoid backing ourselves into. Okay, well, I don't know if we need to take any action again tonight, and I honestly wouldn't be super comfortable with it since this is the first time we're talking about it, so.
I would like to have space to talk about it in a future meeting where we make that appointment. If we can just make sure that we we put that on the schedule.
That makes sense to me.
And that also gives everyone a time to sort of figure out their own workload.
Okay. We can plan to take it up in next meeting. If it's not on the agenda, we'll just do it in good order.
Are those meetings gonna be here too?
Here, Andrew? Yeah, yeah, I would think so.
At six thirty?
That's.
Probably six, six thirty.
I'm just trying to figure out what the parameters for that.
It's gonna be after the.
We could all take a look at our own work, like Commissioner Bartlett said, you know, we'd have to take a look at our own work schedule and determine if it's something that we could even.
And we can be flexible. Those things aren't necessarily set in stone, but starting somewhere around the six o'clock hour is likely.
They used to be, was it five thirty to seven thirty?
Yeah.
And five thirty seems like an early start time for people who are working and want to eat. But so I think it can be shifted. And then you've got Ag Advisory Committee that's agriculture advisory committee at seven to nine, so.
All right, so our next meeting should be planned for we want to do nominations and a vote in our next meeting? So we know.
Yeah.
All right. This is the clean. Okay. All right. Then we can move on to continued business. We have work session number twenty-seven. Thurston forty-five.
Slides. Hello, everyone. Seen this so many times. So you all know who I am, but for the record, Anna Rodriguez, Associate Planner. I'll give you all a little peek behind the veil. How the sausage is made when we approach PC work sessions, sometimes they fall into a bucket. It's really easy to name, like this chapter is capital facilities element. Sometimes they're a little more one-off responsive to things we've heard from the community and they get titled this, that's a little bit misleading because we're not really talking about the allocations at all because they've already been adopted. But this was just a kitschy title, so it looked nice on the agenda, but I apologize in advance for any potential misleadings that may have occurred from that. But we are talking about Grand Mountain today and we are kind of revisiting something that was discussed with you all in October. And of course, it's not going to advance.
And it was also approved already by the Board of County Commissioners, right?
The other piece of this, yes, yes.
I was there.
You were there. Okay, so like I said, an overview of this is it's it's meant to be semi-high level and informational for the most part. I'll provide a quick recap on what you all worked through and gave a thumbs up on in October of twenty twenty-four. A chunk of housing allocations a little bit. And then, like I said, we're being responsive to something specifically, something the board has already adopted. And talk about that in the context of PC and housing requirements for the comp plan and then can top it off with discussion. So this table I made more relevant to us. You have seen this in a different longer iteration in the TRPC allocations, like the report that includes the allocations that were adopted by all jurisdictions. For the sake of what we're doing, what Lacey and what Olympia are doing doesn't matter and what their numbers are. So I simply just pulled Grand Mountain, Merle Incorporated and put it on the slide so we just look at what's applicable to us. Those highlighted numbers in Grand Mountain UGA, we have a bit of a need, two hundred twenty-two, two hundred twenty-three units in the zero to eighty percent area median income bracket. So we know we need two hundred twenty-three units in that income bracket in the Grand Mountain UGA. And so.
All right, question.
Yes.
Would you be willing to rename or remain there to a hundred and twenty percent plus? It's way more accurate and less confusing.
The allocations in this table has already been adopted and it was developed by TRPC. So unfortunately, I cannot. But it is for the record, the remainder is the one hundred twenty percent.
For for situational context, the reason it was called remainder is because the state provided feedback that we didn't have to include or shouldn't include a hundred and twenty percent plus, but then it didn't match up with our land use chapters if none of the jurisdictions acknowledge that there's a remainder. So it got called remainder in response to Commerce, Commerce's feedback. I agree, it's confusing.
We can choose to call it whatever we'd like. Commissioner Bart.
I was just, I had a question about what emergency housing was in this context.
I would have to double check.
Okay.
In most, if not all, conversations we've had about the counties specifically, it hasn't really come up because it's more of a city thing. And I'm saying that recognizing that these two, call these two rows do pertain to the county, but I will confirm rather than give you my speculation. So like I said, we have those allocated numbers, we need to meet those units. And so in October, Maya brought to you all proposed density increases, and these are those upping the density for three to six and four sixteen, and then also adjusting arterial commercial to an extent. You all gave us the thumbs up to move forward with that. So we moved on along and then bam. Comprehensive plan amendment package that went through the board at the end of last year. So we had a docket project, the Grand Mountain UGA expansion, land use and rezone amendment. This is an applicant initiated proposal that consisted of two things. Black Lake Quarry, BLQ for short, and Womowski, for the sake of housing and whatnot, the BLQ piece does not really apply. So I'm just gonna keep saying Womowski and I'm pertaining, I'm talking about this docketed project. Yes.
When we, as Planning Commission, visited these, I believe the Black Lake Quarry was rezoned to something more dense residential. This now says to light industrial, and I think that's accurate, but can you share with all of us how that changed?
I don't, I don't recall it ever being.
The different Black Lake Quarry rezone that hasn't been touched yet.
That that was also industrial.
Okay.
It's not, not a stick. Thank you.
Of course.
I pictured the aluminum pole barn on it.
Yes, so this came through the docket. The Womowski proposal is, was for a rezone from one to five to four sixteen, but that involved the UGA expansion. These two pieces were part of expanding the Grand Mountain UGA. There was a significant amount of community engagement as this specific piece moved through the board's review. People were coming to just provide public comment during regular board meetings and then the board public hearing was very well attended and there was a lot of community concern about increasing density in Grand Mountain. While that being said, you know, during the public hearing, the commissioners did make it fairly clear that it is an urban growth area. And so the intention of an urban growth area is to develop in certain ways. And so while it can't stay rural rural forever, there will be some urban-esque developments. They were very receptive to that and we are being receptive to that as well. So because this proposal received so much feedback specifically from residents of Grand Mountain, it made us take a step back. And this is probably a useful slide. This just provides context of where the Womowski site is and the rezone itself. And this unit, this unit, this piece of land has the potential for a hundred sixteen to four hundred sixty-four units. That would meet the deficit, right? Wrong, unfortunately, because the state has really trying to.
Try.
Some, some fun banter here.
Trying to ground us.
Wrong, no. It's because as part of the bigger housing discussion and what the state is requiring jurisdictions to do, there are assumed affordability brackets for the different types of housing. And so the housing type that could be accommodated in four to sixteen does not meet the assumed affordability for zero to eighty percent. So we would still have a deficit despite the fact that this could potentially build out to be double what we need. It is a bit of a wonky state-driven numbers game and we recognize that, but we are trying to recognize what the state wants us to do, hear what the community is saying and respond accordingly because, you know, we have Plan A and maybe Plan A isn't what the community wants, and so we're gonna try and come up with a Plan B. And so that's why we're here today. I would do that very quickly. Oh, yes.
If the four to sixteen density does not meet these requirements of a lower end of this income spectrum, what kind of density do they think would?
It, our consultants said that if this, if Womowski were zoned eight to twenty-four, it would meet the deficit. But it is zone four sixteen. So it's this.
It's the housing type you can get, so twenty-four units per acre you're talking about. They call it garden, gardening apartments.
Bid rise versus low rise multifamily, pretty much.
And and at sixteen units per acre, you're looking more at, you know.
Townhouses.
Or or two-story apartments, kind of like the multifamily you see in Grand Mountain today.
Yeah.
That's what the zoning is and they're more like two-story. I think the reason, I'm the one who's prompting this revisiting because I sat through all those public comments and public hearing and really heard from the community just how much concern they had with the amount of change that was occurring. Even going four to sixteen, let alone four to twenty-four. Eight to twenty-four, sorry. And then also we have had ongoing concerns from WashDOT in particular about this UGA expansion. And they required a traffic impact analysis at the most intense potential buildout. And they were really concerned about that. Well, if we increase it to twenty-four, we're, we are gonna need to do a much more extensive traffic analysis to ensure that that increase wouldn't then have adverse impacts on the state highway system. At sixteen, we were okay. Nothing broke in the state transportation system. Twenty-four, might see things start breaking. And so we also want to be responsive to those concerns.
Yeah.
Exactly. Where, where are the concerns there? Is it about people being able to get on the Highway twelve headed west?
It's a number of different segments and intersections that were included in that traffic. And the only place where concerns were identified were actually the on-ramps. I think it was like the on-ramp. I think it was northbound. Once it was northbound.
Oh, okay.
So it's a whole thing, it's looking at. Highway twelve, um, as it intersects with I five. Now, they didn't have as much concern with Black Lake Quarry because it's already a, it's an active mine, so it's already generating a number of trips, so it's different kinds of trips. Um, but you didn't see a huge swing, you add four hundred units, ten trips per day. That's a lot more trips, um, so.
What'd you say, four hundred units, ten trips per day?
Usually the assumed number of trips per day for a single family home is somewhere around eight to ten, depending on the size of the home.
I learned I don't drive as much as I thought.
I am like cobwebby on that, but it used to be, that was like the the number that you would assume.
Think about how many people in the home may have cars and taking kids here and there, kids get their driver's licenses.
So anyway, all that to say, thought it might be worth revisiting, that's something that seems good on paper when you actually hear from the community. Might not make as much sense. Um, so we had had a meeting with the consultants to maybe rethink. What we are doing with the arterial commercial, so all of the red, so. Womowski is this light brown, right? Stan, the only other places where you can develop. This type of, um, property is these few little sites down here. We're really taking like this one big site and cramming all the density and all the housing we might need here. I tell commercial allows density, but it's not required, so the question is, can we require it? Um, it's the core of Grand Mound, it's where the services are, it's where all the transportation facilities are being developed.
Do we, do we have very much H twenty-four density anywhere else in any of the other UGAs?
Well, the the North County cities for sure. Or even higher.
In in the UGAs?
In the.
In the UGAs, yeah.
I'm blanking on where those.
They would need water and sewer, I mean.
Yeah.
Lacey. That's no max if you meet certain requirements. It's twenty. And then no, no max if you.
Okay.
Certain requirements.
Would it hit the affordability, um, that affordability window if you just moved it from four to eight to sixteen?
No, it's the top.
It has to be the top end?
Yeah, I asked that. It's the housing type you get.
Yeah.
Um, so it's really getting those garden court apartments and all I could think of was, you know, all the develop, the new development that's happening along I five. Just south of Tom Water, Prosper Road. I was thinking that, I was like, well, what if you had that in Grand Mound? Basically like Great Wolf Lodge, only it's multifamily. Mixed-use stuff and there is so many underutilized or vacant ace arterial commercial parcels. That are large, larger, um, versus the small little R four to sixteen, so it's. We were, you already were considering arterial commercial, I think the big shift is. Is that where we focus this kind of housing type and does it become a requirement of. Certain size developments in that zone versus optional.
So, uh, we, this is an obvious question, but so the traffic examinations need to be done at the maximum of the range, right?
Only for a legislative decision.
Okay.
So it was a non-project action, so they're they're a little funkier.
So all I was gonna say is then we get less flexibility by how wide our ranges are, it sounds like if there was a. Zoning range between those two, where we were saying, hey, we're sixteen to. To twenty, you know, we're forcing them in that high end of the of that, you might hit your price point. And avoid the traffic thing, does that make sense?
Instead of four to sixteen, like six to twenty?
Yeah, some, like a middle ground, one where it wouldn't, it would give us a tool somewhere between the two that we could. It wouldn't be that full twenty-four, thirty-six or whatever it is that would break with the imagined ten trips per every person.
We, we probably have all been down that area and they. Getting on an I five-five there is really pretty easy and they've done a lot of development on twelve. Going through there, they've rerouted and made a lot of changes to the intersections and everything. I don't think, I don't know that that is the problem, I think it would be the problem in and out of the residential area. Cause I've been down there and taken a look at, and I think it's actually taken pictures of the Womowski property. And what they've got right next door to them in that green is like, uh. It's about, probably about six or eight to an acre, they're they're double story real close, I mean hardly any yard at all.
Green where, north, south, west?
Uh, to the, uh, uh, east.
Yeah, in inside the UGA.
Inside the UGA.
Family homes in there, aren't they?
Yeah.
They're all family homes, yeah. The only thing I could see was transportation-wise would be in and out of the residential area with a large.
It's it's a numbers exercise because none of it was real, so it's all assuming the most intensive development. Not even taking into consideration things like parking setbacks, you know, so.
Well, and the other thing is you could set whatever you want, but they can, they can build four to an acre. With that zoning, they don't have to build sixteen to an acre.
Which I do think is also a concern, I think raising the minimum.
Yeah.
Not necessarily an issue, I think with I heard the community, they were really wrestling with. Sixteen units per acre and so whether you go from that to twenty-four, you're saying, you're seeing a lot of different housing types. Than you currently see in Grand Mound.
Yeah. Barry just kind of hit on it, but one of my concerns is if we require too much density, it's no longer gonna be economically. Viable for development, if somebody's got to come in and start with that kind of density where they can't go. You know, going three levels, doing, you know, twelve, twelve packs, you know. That's viable in that area, but if all of a sudden they gotta go to a fourth floor and they double their building costs because they have to. Start using concrete and steel instead of wood, nothing's gonna get built, so if we, if we are forcing them on a minimum density. That's, that could be really problematic and then probably will sit and do nothing forever, I mean, that doesn't solve any problems for us.
I think at sixteen years breaker, you're still looking at wood. Construction.
At sixteen you are, I don't know at twenty-four if you are anymore.
No, but that would be max.
Mr. Pesner then Bartlett.
Oh, I'm sorry, uh, Commissioner Kaiser, I'm gonna go to Commissioner Kaiser, I don't know how long your hand's been up.
Thank you, appreciate that, um, yeah, folks hate change and I know this area really well, I got fam- family down there. And it's, you know, you go back not too far, it was very rural, very tribal, but the reality is it's changing. It's really not in terms of traffic, there's so many worse places in the county than this area in terms of getting on and off the freeway. And I think this is one of our few options to really expand our housing base. Uh, we don't have that many places we can do it and I think this is really ripe for it and yeah, folks, folks are gonna have to learn to live with it, but. I I think we really have to take it very seriously as far as trying to get as many units there as we can.
Thank you, Commissioner Kaiser, go ahead, Commissioner Pesner.
I agree with Commissioner Kaiser, um. Although change being hard, I think partially we've not exactly done the best communication with that area. We've told them different stories and changed the story over time. Um, but my question has to do with arterial commercial. Is that able to have housing?
Yeah, it's it's been optional this whole time, but arterial commercial always allowed housing.
It doesn't say an amount of density, do you know what the density is for that one?
It's currently six to sixteen, um, but the proposed changes that y'all gave thumbs up to was upping it twelve to twenty-four.
It, but it, but if it's optional, you're not gonna see nearly as much of it. So I think the question is.
Well, it's, we did look at the map, there ain't none of it.
Yeah.
None of it has, I don't think there's a single house in that entire area, it's all businesses.
Yeah, I current, I I now drive through there like three times a week and yeah, there's. There are so many vacant arterial commercial parcels.
Any chance that we would see mixed developments with like shops at the bottom, housing above types of solutions?
Could be possible.
You maintain the shop front that way.
To to, um, Commissioner Kaiser's point, the kind of development being proposed now in Grand Mound is not the kind of development that was being proposed even. You know, three to five years ago, it's much bigger developments, higher level of investment, higher level of sophistication in terms of the. Developers coming in, so. I mean, I would, I would hope that that would be the future.
So we, it was what amount and we just changed it to a different amount, six to sixteen?
It's currently six to sixteen and the proposed change that you originally saw was twelve to twenty-four for arterial commercial.
And it's been six to sixteen for a long time? Yeah, so twelve to twenty-four is not gonna all of a sudden magically make people wanna build there.
Factors apply and we should probably look at what those are.
Yeah, but go ahead, Commissioner.
Sorry for interrupting me, um. Yeah, I, uh, I'm looking at that map again, I'm seeing a lot of very degraded habitat in as much as it exists at all. I'm seeing a lot of strip malls, um, I'm seeing a good area to try to put folks in, I'm concerned about the quarry. Um, not because it's, I mean, it's like an active mine right now, it's not exactly great, but it is a lot of, uh. What will be wetland and I'm wondering how our water management is looking for that if we're putting in a lot of housing in that area. Um, I'm sure that's already been taken into account, I'm just curious about it, in the Black Lake Quarry site.
So that's slated to become light industrial.
Okay.
No, no housing.
Okay.
So the, so purple, purple's usually industrial, reds are usually commercial and browns are usually residential.
Yeah, okay. What was that? Uh, yeah, I I'm interested in what we can do to incentivize, to A incentivize actual housing being built in areas that's currently strip malls. Um, and B, if we have a transit plan for that, because if we're trying to increase the seating, that's gonna be. A major factor in how we plan that.
I can give you a little bit of information about transit, Lewis County Transit is, um, designing and planning. Uh, a park and ride, um, slash charging stations and whatnot. Um, at the corner of highway twelve and, uh, old highway ninety-nine.
Okay.
Um, it, um, they're talking to the Chehalis tribe about, you know, where it might go, but. Um, it would look similar to their, um, their park and ride at Melon Street, if you're familiar with that. Just, uh, west of the freeway at Melon Street in, in Tidoya, that's the design they're looking at.
So that's, that's relevant to tying in for construction there.
Bishop Casino.
On on this specific concern about the Womowski property, it it sounds like that, that there. If we were to increase it, increase the density there, we've run up against some problems, one being needing the traffic study. Another being that it might increase the cost of construction to the point that it's not economically viable and the third being. Some real community concerns about density and those would all be in conflict with. The current state mandate to get some more of these kind of housing types that are required and the whole reason of this particular meaning to talk about. Are there other areas in the UGA that we should be looking at to try to get these housing types to hit these income brackets? Other than Womowski, what are our other options for that?
I mean, the ones originally discussed, I wish I could have a side by side. Because there were additional upping of three to six.
In that three to six section, we up those.
If if we were to do this on the slide, just exactly as is, we would satisfy commerce. Um, and the needs necessary, but.
Moving all three to six to five to twelve.
Yes, and this decision was made without Womowski piece, so the four to sixteen would only have applied to those. Those small handful of lots, so the biggest opportunities are tieral commercial, like the most vacant land. In Grand Mound exists in arterial commercial, it doesn't exist in residential three to six, a lot of those are developed with like. One house in the middle of the lot and so you gotta wait for it to redevelop. Um, and so arterial commercial is the opportunity in Grand Mound and it is also where the services are.
So if we we adopt that, we satisfy our commerce issue and we don't rock the horse on all these other issues over on Wom- Womowski.
It has to be a requirement. So it can't just be optional, so our two commercial right now is optional, that that's really the big decision is, do you want us to further explore? What it would look like to make housing a requirement, I would. What what we asked the consultants to do was only look at certain size parcels, it's not gonna happen on like a half an acre parcel, but there are a number of larger ones. So what if it was just a requirement if the development is on a parcel over one acre in size or five acres in size? Would have to, would have to include housing.
I mean, it would basically force the additional development of Grand Mound into basically a little city. Cause right now a bunch of.
Yeah.
A bunch of.
In that urban.
Lighted, uh, strip malls doesn't get them to develop more and it sort of causes a, an add-on effect where people will want to further develop after a certain point.
I like that idea.
I'm I'm not opposed to looking at the larger lots and forcing mixed use.
Would this also be taking the Womowski property off the table or just this just isn't satisfying the requirement?
It doesn't satisfy the requirement and there's also a chance that Womowski could be appealed. So knowing that there's a chance it could be appealed, even if it did. Even if we could meet it with that, if it were appealed, then we would have to come up with another solution.
Another.
So perverse.
I'm sorry. Uh, another consideration is that if we do outreach to Grand Mound, something that. I heard in public comments is that they feel like they're not being given a choice. And so even being able to bring two options to Grand Mound. To chew on so that they're given a choice and we're not just doing a, an exercise on paper and saying, here's the densities, what do you think? And it seems fully baked, it's like, well, here are two options, what do you want your community to look like? Do you want more mixed use in this sort of arterial commercial core? Or would you rather have, you know, these types of housing, um, dispersed throughout the community?
Bishop Hanson.
To the one made by Ms. Norton, um, the, the sewer system here is, um, unique. Uh, it's a small, um, treatment plant and it's a vacuum, um, collector system. That, um. Uh, as I've been told by the folks at the county, it, it, um, it causes them some headaches. And that may be a, uh, consideration that putting more of the housing along the ar- arterial. Where there's actually big sewer pipes in, in the, um, under the, under the highway there. Um, might be a much better thing than adding on to the vacuum sewer system, which is kind of a nightmare. As I understand it.
Bishop Pesner and then Bishop.
The arterial commercial. Is it, it looks like it's at least sixty percent developed already, so even changes here. It'll be minimal opportunity for development or you're trying to find out if there's acreage in arterial commercial?
I mean, when we were looking at it. With the consultant, seemed like there were quite, I mean, if you compare it to what's available in R four sixteen. There's quite a bit of property. But that's why we did ask them to do some additional analysis.
Um, my real question, thank you for that, is about the transportation and it's interesting about the Lewis County bus, uh. Stuff that going on there, but I know a lot of folks in Rochester complain loudly often about no. Intercity transit service, um, is there any discussion or conversation they might be?
So the, so intercity transit.
Something even to Grand Mound only?
Their service area doesn't include Grand Mound currently, they have the Little Arm Peninsula that goes out to Yelm for express service. Um, and then, so the only rural transit option in South County is actually operated by Thurston Regional Planning Council. I think the biggest opportunity is connecting it to Lewis County.
I.
Lewis Transit.
And Grace Harbor Transit, if if Grace Harbor Transit came in on highway twelve, it would pass right through. Uh, if 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 they were to connect at that, um, Grand Mound Park and Ride, they would come right through Rochester to get there, I think.
Are we saying these people only will go to Centralia and Chehalis and never gonna go to Olympia or Tomahawk?
Well, it would be basically a transfer station where intercity transit would connect to that, um, from the north. Lewis County Transit from the south and potentially Grace Harbor Transit from, basically from Elma.
That would be great.
To that, and then rural transit, you could leave that going east towards Tonino is.
It's like an hourly service.
Kind of the dream, but it's, it's, they're planning to develop infrastructure that would allow for that.
It's, there'll be some strong advocacy on behalf of the county and any individuals that wanna participate in. Future intercity strategic planning processes, cause I I was surprised at how small their service area. Future inner city strategic planning processes, cause I, I was surprised at how small their service area was.
They don't recover South Foxbury, a lot of parts.
Hmm.
They don't even go to South Tomahawk.
Yeah.
I, I've hired folks who can't carpool, which is just no way to get to the park and ride.
The interesting thing, um, I heard this recently and from uh, uh, somebody, I think online. Um, that the concern or the, the, the problem with getting additional routes. And I was talking about South Tomahawk specifically, cause that's the area that I live in, is that when you put in a route, anyone within a certain. This that lives within a certain distance of that route then has access to dial-a-ride. And that's where the cost.
To what?
To dial-a-ride.
Oh.
And that's where the cost balloons. If you put a, a route past. You know, neighborhoods that are within a, I think it's a quarter mile of that route. All of a sudden, you then have to service all of those homes with dial-a-ride.
Yeah, uh, so.
It's just expensive.
Understand the, the desire to give multiple options in community outreach and I think that's a really good idea. I do have. And, and I would like to see an op, one of those options being a lot of that being turned into mixed use to force that. But when commerce is making us do this calculate, and I know that we kind of touched on this a little bit before on that, that if. Commerce is doing this calculation and a lot of the stuff that we're then going to rezone as mixed use. But we don't have jurisdiction over it, cause it's tribal owned land. Are they going to say what we did our best and we're good or? Are we gonna have to coordinate that with the tribe to see if what they're gonna do or, I mean, a lot of that red. I, I know a lot of that red is tribal owned.
Yeah.
The chunk is that triangle.
Anything that we would do would be like, we're not going to place any assertions over tribal land. Um, if it reaches a point, kind of, you know, like we're, we're buying property for HCP, maybe we can develop a partnership. And in that way, like government to government of this benefits both of us in that sense. But as far as like allocations go and us identifying areas where like the state's requirements play. Don't touch tribal lands, cause the state doesn't have any authority.
If the tribe decides to put these lands on the rolls, will that officially remove it from the UGA?
I do not know that answer. I can find out. No, I don't think so.
He was asking a question, not making a statement.
Alright, I mean, I think. A lot of that I know is tribal owned, so it's obviously not removed from the UGA.
Well, if they, once they put it on the rolls, cause not all tribal lands are on the rolls. Off reservation tribal trust land.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You guys know a lot about these tribal lands. Could anyone even just point to where most of them are on this map?
A big triangle of red at the bottom. Look for the big water slide.
Well, no, keep going up.
Uh, right in there.
North of, yes, that's tribal. North of Highway twelve is all tribal.
I have access to all of it.
I would say, I would say if you. Most of the red is tribal owned.
Yeah, some of the purple or quite a bit of purple.
Well, that triangle area down the south area is all tribal.
It's also some of the most environmentally sensitive of the lands, so.
Which brings me to my concern about this is. We know because it's happened before, the tribe says, do whatever you want, cause we're, and we're gonna do whatever we want. If we make this, if, let's say we make it arterial commercial and require whatever density. And the tribe says no. Then we've just done all this to say we're meeting the state's requirements for. This density and pricing of housing, but we're never gonna get there.
Well, to that point, that's kind of what this whole exercise is everywhere, is commerce is saying. You have to plan for and accommodate for housing at all income brackets. But at this point in time, not a single jurisdiction could actually do anything to develop any of that housing and there's no punishment for it. It's just the planning, it's like. Well, but. Plan for and accommodate, so we all change our zoning, but nothing happens.
We can do something.
Unfortunate.
I mean, we can make different rules to make it easier to get there or, you know, at least say we can get there. What I'm saying right now is. This is just, I mean, this isn't like pipe dream like four to sixteen or twelve to twenty-four. This is pipe dream like twelve to twenty-four or another business, cause that's what the tribe will do. If they want to.
They, the reality is, is they could buy the Womowski property in the coming months in the same situation, what applies. So I don't wanna spend too much time focusing on ownership. Because that, that's dynamic. Um. It is hard for us to track even what is currently, like in the different stages.
So how, how would you like us to land the plane on this conversation for you?
Um, this was simply, we wanted to let you know that this. Piece of a comp plan package got adopted. We heard a lot of things from the community and we anticipate you hearing a lot of those same things. And so we wanted to let you know we're being responsive, we're trying to adjust. In ways necessary, like there's been a lot of discussion here that we can take into consideration as we move forward and talking with the consultants. Um, but just like you, you will see this again.
Okay.
In another iteration.
Then go ahead, Commissioner Bomberger, and then I think we'll move on.
To the point of giving them options, since it doesn't sound like we have a ton of options, um, it sounded like. Forcing mixed use in the, in the, at least the not yet developed parts of the commercial arterial, cause there is a good chunk of it that is still. Just lots. Um, it sounds like the size of the lots where you would force that is something that might have some squish, so. Maybe if we're presenting options, it's all lots over one acre versus all lots over four acres, like. At least then we're, we're acknowledging like this is the only place we can get the density, but you decide how much density. That at, at least gives them what wiggle room we can give them in that, cause this is all a hypothetical numbers game anyway. No one's, we're not building all this land to its max capacity. It's just not happening. People live there already.
How, um, and then as it relates to the R four to sixteen, I think we were still planning to bring that option out. Would you? Like us to bring that option out or hold back on the, the option relating to increasing the max density for the. The twenty-four from sixteen.
Oh, you mean out of the UGA?
Oh, no, like the, the, which would apply to Womowski. So currently it's R four to sixteen. The proposal was to go all the way up to twenty-four. Do you still want that to be an option that could share with the community?
I think sharing more options with the community is better than sharing less options, even if I don't think that they're, I'm like, I wouldn't support every option.
It's, it's a traffic study is the issue, yeah.
It's, it's a consideration, knowing the concerns that we heard from Wash Stop with. That UGA expansion at the current density.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, well.
He was first. I know you want to move on, but I think I got it.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess, I think a lot of this, if, I think a lot of the, the hesitation in addition to just like what this is doing in the footprint. Is that we're imposing a lot of uh, uh, we're imposing a big, a, a big increase in population without a lot of services. As, as uh, Ms. Norton uh, mentioned. And it'd be interesting, I think you would get a different response if this was coming with the offer of like. Some kind of civic resources to take in all of these people in terms of like, you know, like, like public libraries in terms of. You know, there are other, other things that people need in the space that they're not going to then have to drive to Olympia to be able to, to, to get. Access to.
Like a playground?
Like a playground, like a playground.
I was like gonna say that.
All of that.
Channeling you.
I, I was gonna say the same thing, but in the context of the um, community comments, like I, I heard a lot of things that were said. About keep it small, keep it rural, um, to make sure we have transportation and other infrastructure. Um, but I also heard a lot of stuff about we want sidewalks, we want parks, we want uh. Uh, a museum, I kept hearing from some group, uh, and other kind of like. Paul was just saying, this community services and. Are we at least saying that that's part of the conversation with them too? Is there any discussion about? Could there be a park in here? Is there any discussion about sidewalks and where they belong?
Think that would fit in our conversations with Public Works and the CIP.
Which we've already made that recommendation.
And the tribe, like those are things that benefit the tribe as well.
Yeah, and they have been a, a, a good partner in Grand Mound, though I, I wanna make sure. As we end this discussion, know that they have been a good partner in Grand Mound and they've been very engaged in the comprehensive plan on a date. So anything that comes out of this conversation will be shared with them and we'll get their input.
Bishop Jane, if I could just real quick, I know you wanna move on.
You wait.
I, I just wanna kind of touch on the point that, you know, we hear a lot of things about how there's not the infrastructure and we don't have. Everything to support it yet, and I think that we gotta remember that the very first thing we do is land use and zoning and those kind of things. Everything has to come after that. So if people are saying, we don't have the capacity for this, we don't have the infrastructure for it. Well, we gotta do the plan first and you gotta do the land use stuff before you can do any of that, so.
And you charge the impact fees and then you go.
Yeah, the very first step has to be doing the planning and land use.
Go ahead.
I'll just say really quickly, I wanna echo what Mr. Kaiser said. My grandparents had a farm on the very, very south end of that map. That, that we saw up there. Um, and this area has changed a lot since I was a little kid and, and. Change is hard, people are gonna resist it, but um, that, that just is what it is. I think this is. One of the only places that county has leverage to pull um, on housing. The other last word that I wanted to just throw out there and ask is, what happens if we tell commerce no? What if we tell them, you don't, you don't know what you're talking about, like, we're gonna go a different direction. What's the outcome that happens then?
We've already done that a few times with our housing, like capacity now, since we just keep getting emails from them. Um. Saying, you're not doing it right. Actually, they're sending emails to all county planning directors using.
Knowing that there's a new director in commerce, there's a new governor who's looking into and appointing people to, to a, a. Uh, government accountability positions and figuring out like, how, how is, you know, how are these decisions being made? And are they really benefiting, you know, the vision that we have?
Know that I am sure at some point during a comprehensive plan process, we will have to say no. I'm not sure if this is the issue, but. I don't know what happens. I know Maya's been listening and she's been more, she's more familiar with what happens. Through past processes, it, we're all, it'll be new for some of us here at the table.
It's probably not commerce that we should be as worried about as it would be like a third party lawsuit, said we didn't follow the law. And then, um, sorry about the last word, Joel, but Commissioner Kaiser, I don't know how long you've had your hand up, sorry.
Oh, thank you so much. I know it's hard to see us on the screen. Um, yeah, just um. You know, as we increase uh, density, we have to increase services. That is absolutely essential. And I do believe those things will come and I really truly believe that this is one of the very few places we have. Uh, an opportunity to increase density. Um, and the outcome, if we don't meet the commerce standards is. People will not have housing and that is very serious. This is one of the most serious things our state is facing right now. I think we have a potential here to. Make some choices that are, are not just about what happens tomorrow, but what happens five, ten, thirty years from now. And I think this is one we have to, we have to really grit our teeth and say, yeah, we're ready to. Really endorse more, more, more homes for, for Thurston County residents.
Thank you, Commissioner Kaiser. And with that, must we have one for one more in? Okay, we may have wrestled it to the ground for tonight and we can move on to work session. Number twenty-seven of Thursday, twenty forty-five now for the supplemental environment.
Hannah Rodriguez, associate planner. Um, this is.
The same one or does it get to count as twenty-eight?
I grappled with that too, and I think that they're both twenty-seven because. And I did, I truly grappled with that for a while, whether this should count as twenty-seven or twenty-eight. It's one cell in an Excel spreadsheet, so I stuck with twenty-seven.
You're never gonna beat the SMP update with attitude like that.
Um, this is. I prefaced the previous presentation, what this is a high level informational. This one is very high level informational, just so you know what is coming. Um. We're working on the comp plan, you're all very well aware of that, um, as part of. Everything we do and as part of the comp plan, we have to do a SEPA review. Um, we issued a determination of significance for the comp. Plan in July, August of last year. Um, and that brings us to here, fast forward to today. Um. This, we're doing a supplemental environmental impact statement, so we have the State Environmental Policy Act. That sounds right. Um, and. You've probably heard many, many a time EIS. Um, we're taking a slightly different approach. Uh, rather than do an EIS for various reasons, we're doing a supplemental, so we're using. The environmental impact statement that was completed with the Habitat Conservation Plan, not program, okay, plan, um, in twenty twenty-two. Um, one, because EISs are very expensive. Um, but two, because it was completed in twenty twenty-two and so many of the same things are being analyzed. That in conversations with the consultant, it just made sense to do a supplemental as opposed to just a standalone, brand new EIS. Um, there are some alternatives in the EIS that are being evaluated. Um, the consultant. I'm realizing should have sent today but did not, so hopefully it will be in my inbox in the morning. Um, an updated draft. SEIS, so the way that this will go is, they shared a draft with us, we all read the four hundred page. Beast of a document, um, provided so much feedback and sent it back and then they're sending it back to us again. Um. This is just the draft, so we will issue the draft SEIS next month at some point. With the intention of it being stage one of getting more public comment. Uh, it will be open for a thirty day public comment period. And that will kind of align with where we're at with the, hopefully, hopefully. If the scheduling, when you all set the public hearing for the comp plan, those two periods will overlap. Um. People will provide public comment on the SEIS and then it will likely be chewed up, spit out and redone for the final. Um, that will come out end of summer, fall timeframe. Um, there's. Many things that EIS is involved in, since this is a big one tied to the comp plan, there's a lot of. Underlying assumptions and things that are being impacted. Um, I'm sure you saw in the memo, I simplified it so drastically to just natural environment. Built environment, um, but there, there are a lot of pieces involved. Um, the alternatives do take into consideration. I mean, housing is, is a big, to follow up on the conversation we were having, housing is a huge thing. We had many discussions with housing as far as. Five percent rural growth versus the, what is it, fourteen percent rural growth when thinking about allocations and so. The different alternatives taken to consideration impacts and potential mitigation efforts for those different things based off buildable lands. Based off of sustainable Thurston and things of that sort. And so it was not originally in the timeline for us to like. Take space to talk about this with you all and like bring you into the SEPA review piece. Um, but after, I mean. You all love talking about the comp plan and we want you to be as involved as possible and so we're, I'm giving you the heads up now. That we have set aside some time, if you want to, the comp plan itself is gonna be more than four hundred pages. But if you wanna read the draft, four hundred page SEIS, once it's issued, we're setting. We're setting aside some time to have conversations specifically about that piece, um, since this is. A big project and you can dive in as much or as little as you want. Um, to that SEIS piece. Um, I think it's important that you all are looped in to the environmental review side of things, just because there's so much conversation and so much that we hear from the public. Regularly of, on how the comp plan impacts environmental concerns.
Um, not to get too deep into the woods here, but um. On the uh, the differences between the HCP EIS and the supplemental, what, is there gonna be a specific focus? Um, and maybe just, maybe that focus should be our focus instead of all of it.
True. The whole thing is relevant. Um. It, it is like many large documents required by state policy, a bit redundant and a bit repetitive, so. Um, while it is lengthy. There is a lot of duplicative information in it. Um, and so you can glean. The important nuggets without actually reading the entire thing. Um. I think if I could pick things that I really want you to focus on, it would be things tied to housing and climate. Um, just because those two elements have the biggest backing from necessary state, state updates. But those two things do go hand in hand in having some serious, uh, like seriously large, not serious necessary. But those two things do go hand in hand in having some serious, uh, like seriously large, not serious necessarily isn't bad. Um, impacts when thinking about planning moving forward. Significant, that's the word. It's late. My brain's not quite working. Um, but.
I would say water, water is, is an area where we specifically, I think we heard from the community is important and then where we specifically ask the consultant team, like they have a sub consultant just to focus on a water piece. It's not gonna be a, you know, full on water valve, water availability analysis for the whole county, but at least just set a framework for how we should be thinking about that and, um, impacts to policy decisions. And then, of course, we heard a lot from the community around habitat workers and.
Um, on the topic of water, uh, we've heard a bunch of times about portions of Grand Mountain being critical aquifer recharge area. Can you tell us approximately where on the map is it fifty percent of that stuff we saw highlighted in three or four different colors? Is it all of it? Is it five percent of it?
I could verify on a map, but I think it's all.
Technically, all of the county is within some sort of critical aquifer recharge area. It just depends on the category. A lot of those areas in South County that are the porous well draining quarry soils are in the higher sensitivity categories because things hit the ground, they just go.
And there are special provisions just for Grand Mountain. So if you start looking at, um, the uses that are allowed in Grand Mountain zones, it's a more restrictive list, um, because of the groundwater considerations.
Is it all in the wire for the Chalas River or any other watershed?
The Chalas.
Yeah, pretty much all of that Grand Mountain area is like channel migration zone. So it's gonna be a lot of high groundwater. Thank you.
Commissioner Bartlett? I guess this actually question directly to you, uh, uh, because you're sort of the local expert on, on porous versus non-porous surfaces when it comes to construction. Local as of this room. But, uh, should we be taking anything into account when it comes to our construction goals regarding the fact that this is a critical aquifer and we're trying to, or the, these are all various levels of critical aquifer and we're trying to drain.
Um, my guess is it would drain really well. Uh, depending on how they're being used, how or if they're being used for drinking water, it'll actually create problems for, uh, doing a low impact development. Um, so if you're trying to infiltrate water in these areas, it could be a problem there. So you might have to, you might have to look at other, uh, other strategies for stormwater management.
Just to circle back to this SEIS and how much we're gonna dive into it. Um, I would, I would support the idea of not going through all four hundred pages, but hitting water, housing and probably climate. Uh, and I imagine the, the EIS portion of the climate section is probably more about resiliency than anything else going to be. And I don't even know if that matters. We could get into all that kind of stuff later, but I, I think that, that the EIS and the SEIS, these things are, there's not a lot of controversial stuff in a lot of them and I wouldn't wanna spend tons and tons of time on it, especially if it's just stuff that we already did in the last couple of years with HCP and HCP turned out really well, I still believe. So, um, I wouldn't wanna spend too much time on it when we could actually spend time on the chapters instead of the SEIS.
No, absolutely. This was an addition that can be used however you all seem. Um, it was like a gap that we noticed in PC schedule and we could put this in here however much you desire. Um, we just wanted to make sure that all process of the comp plan was transparent and being brought to you all. If you all wanna say, no, we don't even wanna look at this, it doesn't matter. That's perfectly fine. We just wanted to provide the opportunity.
Everything I learned in policy schools, I wouldn't spend my time on it, but go ahead, Commissioner President.
Uh, following up on the public comment, uh, Betsy Norton made some comments about some things like missing, some things, you know, make sure you look at impervious surface, make sure you look at critical water, aquifer recharging. Um, on the stuff that looked missing to her, are you aware, was that maybe because of using the SEIS or is it because of uh, things were removed or any other reason?
I interpreted Betsy's comment as me not having the information in the memos for today. Not so much, because the SEIS has not been made publicly available. It won't be available until we issue it for its thirty day public comment period.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Always feed it to an LLM and tell it to tell us what's important.
Oh, God.
They're surprisingly good at that.
I, I know that they, they, they're good with processing huge amounts of data.
I've fed them raw sticky notes and they spit them out.
Sorry to keep going. Um, the map of current Grand Mountain UGA and both of these two things, Womoski and extending it, it looks like there's obvious areas it can't remotely grow into, to the east. Um, is there any room to the west that the UGA can grow?
There are growth opportunities all around. There's also potential for UGA swaths. We've got a number of, we have a number of mines that are no longer, you know, that they've gone beneath the water cables. Um, cost of redevelopment would be very high. Um, so there's opportunities there to maybe pull something out, to add something in. It's a really high bar to expand the UGA. I mean, it was, it was a high bar to get Womoski and Black Lake Quarry pulled in. Um, we heard repeatedly from the state that had concerns about that. Um, I'm not sure if a UGA expansion is on the table.
That was my question.
Uh, this is probably getting a little tangential and if it is, I apologize. If, if for some reason the tribe does pull land out and put it into a reservation and that does remove it from the UGA, would that give us new opportunities to expand the UGA because we lost some land? Or can you do a UGA swap by taking out tribal lands to bring something else in?
Don't know the answer to that question. I was just reading through all the UGA laws and there is no reference to that. So.
Think you might be the first to ever think of that. I mean, like a law review article to me. There's sensitive areas that we don't really want to develop the tribe owns and it would give us the ability to expand the UGA.
That's probably a good conversation to have with the tribe.
Commissioner Bartlett?
Yeah, um, so, uh, the, uh, speaking of the intersection between housing and climate um, and areas that we wanna focus on, um, so I've been looking at this fun little story maps out of the Thurston County Flood Hazard Mitigation Plan that we were, we were, we were sent. Um, and while none of the areas that we're looking at are directly in the high flood risk uh, zone, obviously the Chalas River being so close means that they're basically surrounded by high flood areas. This comes back to that question about emergency housing. And essentially that, uh, any of the development that we're going to be doing here, and I think a lot of the development that we're talking about in the rural area should take into account the fact that we may have to emergency, we may have to accommodate people whose houses are, are, uh, are going to be increasingly at risk, uh, from the coming, from, from the coming variable climate. Um, I'd be interested in, in how this plan that we're looking at will, will, will affect that. So it's maybe an area that I would like to focus on a little bit more if we're looking at the comp plan.
If you'd like the emergency housing definition that is defined by the RCW would include in the allocations, I can provide that now.
Great.
Um, temporary indoor accommodations for individuals or families who are homeless or at imminent risk of becoming homeless. That is intended to address the basic health, food, clothing and personal hygiene needs of the individual families. Emergency housing may or may not require occupants to enter into a lease or an occupancy agreement.
So not like disaster.
It's more like shelter.
Yeah.
Which is also a crisis that we're facing and have brought up at like every third meeting.
But that thing only said six in the county. Didn't the county buy hotels, kind of hundred rooms?
It was six in, I think, unincorporated rural.
Yeah, that, that did not include Olympia.
Yeah, the cities were not.
I know the cities are not, but.
I mean, there's schools right there in this area. Wouldn't those serve purpose?
So where's the difference? Sorry, Barry's pointing out that there's nine hundred in the county that are not in the cities. And that says six.
The six was a different line.
It's six in Grand Mountain UGA, it's nine hundred thirty six throughout the county entirely.
Oh, there are. Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you.
That's the total. That's thinking about the county, not in the way that we do, which is including the cities.
Uh, something that California can teach us. Um, they will be uninsurable way before they will be uninhabitable. Um, insurance companies have some of the best climate modeling in the world. Um, and they will be able to tell us in a lot of ways where housing is not viable or disaster strikes in a lot of cases.
And in res, in response though to your, your specific questions about Grand Mound, I think what we learned um, from the climate vulnerability assessment is that it is a hotspot, especially for extreme heat. Um, that I have shared that information with our emergency management, um, division. And I don't know if you recall, but there are monies left to do follow-up climate planning studies. Um, it's like five hundred thousand dollars that's still set aside once we get through the adoption of the climate element. And so my discussions with emergency management have been do, would you like to use a portion of those funds to look at emergency response specifically in Grand Mound? Um, whether that's extreme heat or flooding, but as it relates to climate resiliency for that community. So more to come, but know that there's definitely, it's been flagged as an area that probably could use some additional planning.
Get my follow-up question. Thank you.
Good. We were running squarely into it, not my department.
Oh, no, they've been very receptive.
Okay. All right. Um, anything else on this before we move on to staff updates? All right.
I'll just clarify because I, maybe I didn't, maybe I wasn't clear when I was questioning the, what happens when we, i- if and when we were to say no to Commerce. If, if it's true that this, this thing about the housing is merely an academic exercise and we're gonna check all these boxes, but the housing isn't going to be built and we know it, then I would prefer that we spend our time trying to figure out what would cause the housing to be built, whether or not that meets Commerce's goals or not. And, you know, they don't have to live here. They can do whatever they want. But I think we should be trying to solve the problem regardless of what the direction we get from the state is.
I second that.
It sounds like a good plan to me.
All right.
That sounds like dual track.
That, that was actually the conversations that we had with Commerce as it related to Womoski. As their response was like, well, you need to update your buildable lands analysis before you can consider this. You need to update your complaint. Like basically just checking more boxes. And our response was, we have heard that there's a workforce housing problem today. If you go to any meeting in these communities, you hear from the tribe, from the schools, there are no places for people to live. If there's an opportunity to address that today, why would we wait two more years to address it? I, I just, so all that to say, yes, um, I agree. And we've been trying to advocate on behalf of, of the county and folks who wanna live in the same places that they work, um, in the county. And this is one of the employment centers in rural county. So we did say no. No, to try to accommodate workforce.
Right. We will move on to the staff update.
Hey, um, so recently we filled an associate planner position. Uh, we hired Claire Swerengin for that role on January first. She comes to us with both local government and contracting world planning experience on a variety of topics. Uh, this is Dana Bowers' old position for reference. Uh, Claire's gonna be tackling planning issues with the natural resource and environmental focus. So that'll be things like the critical areas ordinance update, adaptive management, planning for the forest land conversion, um, ordinance that was adopted last year and things of that bent. Uh, we will have Claire join us at some point for you all to meet her. Um, she had a cold this week and we said, please don't come. Um, we have also hired another associate planner position. This is Brian Benjamin's old planning position uh, to work on more stream flow restoration related issues. Um, we should be able to announce the person who received that position very soon, but we I believe we have extended an offer and I think that has been accepted. Uh, Leah Davis, associate planner, left county service. Her last day was on January sixteenth. So we are, um, that position's currently open and being advertised. It closes on Sunday, eleven fifty nine PM. So if you know anybody who wants to work on housing, um, joint plans, economic related issues, that's the focus of that position moving forward.
Do we not have someone doing development code for UJAs then right now? Cause that was her.
They're currently in a holding pattern. I'm, I'm kind of picking what I can. Um, and the main thing that's active right now is working on water on theirs, but we're still waiting for them to update their stuff. So.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
Ish.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, I'm kind of point person for anything that was on Leah's plate that is, um, not being handled at the moment. Um, so if you know anyone who's looking for that kind of work, let us know. Uh, let's see, the last thing there would be, um, community planning manager interviews are happening next week. So hopefully there will be resolution on that relatively soon. And with that, I'll kick it over to Ashley. She's gonna tell you about the countywide planning policy updates.
I watched it.
Oh, you did? Um.
I left at five thirty and it wasn't over.
Yeah.
I can tell you about it.
Um, so the countywide planning policy updates include both new policies, um, to hopefully in, increase, um, tribal participation or encourage tribal participation, um, and greater acknowledgement of tribal issues. Um, and they also included the UGA swap policy, um, updates and unanimous support for the tribal coordination policies. Quite a bit more mixed, UGA swap policies. Um, essentially what the policies do is establish a a regional coordination framework, um, and process for how city, cities within the county and the county would um, review these kinds of proposals. As you are well aware, there is one on the docket. Um, and so this policy framework, um, if it does, um, get adopted in whatever form would, would allow for the processing of that, um, docket project. So we had probably, I don't know, fifty plus people attend and provide testimony. With three amazing high school students provide testimony and it was impressive. Um, anyway, I, I got home and my husband's like, which high school did they go to? Which is in our kids at those. It was Tumwater. I was like, Tumwater, we don't, Tumwater. Anyway, we might have to move to Tumwater to, to have our children learn how to speak in public settings. Um, I just appreciated that that many people took time out of their day to engage in this process. These are big decisions. Um, and countywide planning policies haven't been updated since I think twenty fifteen. Um, and so I'm glad it's on folks' radar. Um, there will be a much bigger update in twenty twenty six to incorporate all the housing and climate stuff. So maybe this is, you know, people are aware that this is another, another way to engage. Um, final action cannot be taken till February fourth at a minimum. Um, and there'll be a follow-up work session with the board between now and then. And, and there's no guarantee that they'll take any action on February fourth either. Happy to answer questions.
I just have a comment. Just, uh, sorry to see Lee Davis go. She was always very patient with us and a real paunt of knowledge and, um, yeah, sorry to see that she's no longer with us.
All right. Anything else for staff update? Thank you, Commissioner Kaiser. Um, anything else on item seven, the Thurston twenty forty five update?
Um, you, the public hearing draft, we're set to have that discussion on two, five. Um, the ENO team is pouring their blood, sweat and tears into going through all of the chapters to plane talk them. So last I spoke with you all, we were not going to plane talk housing, climate or transportation. Um, we're actually going to. They have the time and the capacity and those are some of the beefiest chapters. So I think it's worthwhile. Um, I've reviewed a couple of them. I think they're gonna be a really great supplement to the chapters themselves. Um, the policy language did not change. So the policy language has not been plain talked, but the narratives in all of the chapters will be. Um, and Laura has done a stellar job changing the template. So there, we, we, we had a meeting earlier today and previewed them and the comp plan, when it's done, is going to look really nice, as well as having some really meaningful, awesome policies for wherever meets the road. But I think it's worth giving that team like a huge shout out because they've been putting all of the chapters through analysis to make it, um, to bring it down from a postgraduate reading level to, I think, I think the best we can hit is sophomore in high school, but that's still a major improvement. But that's still a major improvement as far as, um, readability and hopefully making this a more accessible document on the whole. And it's going to look really pretty, um, we're going to look like a real big, like a big jurisdiction document based on what Laura has to like. We're going to look like King County, like big, lots of people here, but like really, really great document, so. Big set to, set to have that.
Are we going to get a hard copy of that when?
You requested it, so well, the hard copy you get won't be the pretty one, that, that, okay. You, you requested a hard copy, we can make sure to get you a hard copy, but I think it's worth saying, the, the prettiness factor will be more in the final. Because it's going to require a lot of tweaking and templating and, and, and design things that I just simply don't know how to do.
And coloring.
Feel free to save the ink.
What are other, yeah, so I know Christian Haversen wanted a hard copy and, okay, so.
Do not kill a tree on my account, I will do it digitally.
If you keep it forever.
Commissioner Kaiser and Fishburne, would you like a printed copy of those or not?
I'm okay reading it digitally.
Okay, so we're going to do five, five right across.
Get out the binder, literally like, we'll go buy it.
I'll make note of all.
And, yeah, besides that contract, as far as timeline goes, still ahead of all the other jurisdictions.
It's going to be pretty and on like ahead of everybody else. All right, thank you for the update, any questions before we move on? All right, um, moving on to calendaring with agenda items. Our next meeting on the calendar is that February fifth meeting. We will review our public hearing draft and also discuss that water resources board. Position.
Sorry, that draft is the comp plan or something else?
Um, how are we looking for attendance, is there anybody who knows they won't be able to join us?
I'll be a question mark on the fifth.
Uh, next up is the February nineteenth meeting. We have a recap and the supplemental EIS discussion. Anybody we know of who will not be joining us for that meeting?
I'm a maybe. I don't know about my health, but I'm not, might not make year two O two.
Is that, is that a restart? Does it, when does it restart? But I thought it was just like.
It depends on how soon the historical events that causes to restart.
Second, second grader diet and try us, right? Okay, um, sounds like we will likely have quorum for both of those. Anything before we move on to good of the order? All right, do we have any good of the order? Commissioner Passenger.
We want to leave a session without talking, but. I'm asking for a friend, does the planning commission have any authority to revoke Comcast Xfinity's license?
I don't know, we could try it.
I moved.
See what happens.
I moved.
Number fifty two of fifty two companies for customer satisfaction.
Yeah.
I don't know why, we'd want to take action against them.
All right, any other good of the order? All right, having no other business, this meeting is adjourned.
Two minutes and we. Yeah, I was going to say we finished on time.
A big thank you to Sonia and Delicia for standing in for Tasha.
Yeah, so much.
Speaks to what large shoes that is to fill it takes two people.